Okay.
Cheryl, let's do a, let's do a roll call.
All right. Bill Henderson.
Here.
Nina Pichachelli.
Yeah.
Bruce Geller Ducci.
Here.
Joe Colosimo. Joe Verducci.
Here.
Virginia Schneider.
Here.
Nick Sheselski.
Here.
Betty Copeland.
Here.
Tom McDermott.
Here.
Kevin Brett.
Here.
Cheryl Glorik here. Chad King.
Here.
Ray Castain is not here, or Dan Miller is not here.
Okay. Do we have anyone in the audience from the public that wants to speak?
We have Bob Friar, and I have him unmuted.
Go ahead, Bob.
Oh, can I speak now, Bill?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
Okay, hi. Excuse me. As you know, I've been spending a lot of time for the past couple of years trying to devise ways to solve the Bridgeville traffic congestion problems since for the two-lane bottleneck in between two four-lane roads. And we've all heard that the reason that PennDOT never made any real effort to solve the bottleneck problem was because the railroad bridge, excuse me, that goes over top of the two-lane Washington Avenue, that the officials were unreasonable and they, nobody could deal with them. So, but anyway, to make a long story short, on May the 15th, I sent a letter to the three top officials of the railroad company with some drawings of not replacing the bridge, but just building an exact duplicate of the existing bridge so that two more lanes and a sidewalk could be built on the east side of Washington Avenue from the Barrow Road intersection, under the bridge extension, over the Collier Township. At any rate, to my surprise, about a week later, one of the officials called me. And we talked for about 20 minutes on the phone. They, he explained that they liked the idea that my proposal was to build the bridge in two phases, and it would not extensively interrupt their use of the, their trains using the line. And I think this is a major opportunity for the community and the region. I've given copies of the letters that I wrote and the drawings to President of Council and our new, Eric, new Borough Manager. And I couldn't find Ken Brett's address. I wanted to send it to Ken as well. But anyways.
Which official did you talk to so we don't have to restart the whole discussion with the the group that we were working with Collier on? Who, who was the individual that showed the interest?
You mean with the railroad company?
Well, you had said that there was somebody of interest, that had a lot of interest, so we don't have to re-explain it. Who, who did you speak to?
I, I don't want to tell you that now, because I want to be involved in the discussion with these guys.
You are involved, Bob. You get yourself.
Look, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I'm not gonna debate with you. This is a critical opportunity for the entire, for Bridgeville.
I don't think you're involved. If you do know this work, you are involved. We know from the grade.
Nina, when you got.
Question. Who did you talk to?
I'm not going to tell you yet.
Well, then, if you got you, if you get you off completely, you're not, you're not cooperating.
No, you're wrong. I'm being totally cooperative if you let me finish my, let me, let me finish.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
All right, let me finish my comment. The, the, I don't know if this official is an engineer or not, but he said that he was very familiar with the Bridgeville traffic congestion problem. He mentioned that he, I, I don't, I'm, I think he lives in a small community in Ohio or somewhere. But he said the problem's been so bad for so long. Apparently, he has a, like a pickup truck with railroad wheels on it. And he mentioned that he would, someplace west of Safad, he would get on the railroad tracks, drive through Safad, Bridgeville, and Collier, and then get off someplace around Carnegie and continue wherever his destination was. But the point, point was that they seem, he said, no one's really approached them with a design, bridge design like this before. But he emphasized that PennDOT won't approve any improvement of Washington Pike unless it involves solving the entire Washington Pike Route 50 traffic congestion problem. As we, as we've all talked about dozens of times, that involves the, that involves implementing the two-way couple for two blocks in Bridgeville and, and, and solving the traffic congestion problem totally. And the, and the only thing I was going to mention was, I'll send copies of the letter and the, and the drawings to all of you guys. But I'd like to meet with you before anybody approaches the officials from the railroad company, because this is such an important issue.
Those, those, the engineer and who else you say they are, they are on the time that, who they're gonna charge for their meeting? They're not gonna charge tomorrow.
Excuse me, Nina, Nina, I, I don't understand what you're saying. Talk more clearly.
You want to have a meeting with that engineer, right? That's on his.
Yeah. Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have the meeting alone.
We did, we have authorized something like that for them to set us the bill. I'm sure Verducci already understand, he, he probably would have come with that question.
I, I don't know what Bill you're talking about, but the gentleman did say, I asked him if, I, I've mentioned that if they, excuse me, I mentioned if the Bridgeville officials do agree with the proposal and are interested in, in, in making the needed comprehensive plan, part of the comprehensive plan, which I think it already is, I asked him if he would meet with some of the Bridgeville officials, and he said he'd be glad to. But what I want, what I want to do is, I want to meet with you guys and make sure you understand the details of this proposal. And I, I'll, I'll get the, the same drawings I sent to Bill and Joe Cower. I'll, I'll get to you guys in a couple of days, because I want you to study it and understand it. And then we can get together, because I'm anxious to see how you propose it. Incidentally, the fellow mentioned to me that PennDOT never has approached them about widening the road and extending the bridge, which sort of surprised me, because I was under the impression that they had and, because they were, I've heard many times, not from PennDOT officials, but, but from officials in, in some of the surrounding communities, that the, the railroad people, companies are generally very hard to get along with. But this, the fellow I talked to was very cooperative. So, I just wanted you guys to know what I've done up at this point. I'll get you the data so you can understand in detail what it is. And then I'd like to meet with you, because I'd like to know how you're going to approach this guy and/or his, or a group of officials from the railroad company. But, excuse me, there's no sense approaching the railroad company, as this gentleman mentioned to me, unless, unless the solution, unless Bridgeville proposes the comprehensive plan solution to the entire corridor traffic congestion problem, which means widening Washington Avenue two lanes and the sidewalk to go under the bridge to Collier, and also the extending shady avenue, 220 yards, I think, to create the two, three-lane wide, one-way streets for, for two blocks.
Okay, Bobby. Thanks for forwarding that to me. Go ahead and get the copies out to these other folks so that they know what you're talking about.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for Bob, with all the response.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Nina.
The people you talked from the railroad, how old were they? Were they were 30, 40, 50 maybe?
Oh, I, I don't know.
Well, you can tell.
Wait, wait, wait a second.
You know the age of somebody, but what I want, what I'm gonna talk to. The people we talked to, to big, I'm, I'm here 33 years. We did talk to the people railroad to move, to make their bridge bigger. So, those people, they're dead. The people you talk now, they tell you they're gonna be talked, talked. That's my point. They've been talked to them. Believe me, Bob, when I tell you, they've been talked to them.
That's, that's, that's one.
Longer, and, and that's, we scare them when we put, when somebody went and almost killed himself under there. That's why we put those burial there. I said, please, try to make that thing bigger.
Okay, all right, listen.
People you talk to, they will not exist then. But we, we tell this new world that we didn't talk to them.
Nina, Nina, I'm, let me interrupt for a moment. I would, I talked to the.
Bob, Bob. No, hey, Bob.
Nina, I, I talked to the guy on the telephone.
Bob, this isn't a debate between you and Nina. I appreciate what you brought to us. Get the copies out to the rest of council and we will take a look at it, okay?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I want to make, I want to make clear that the, the past, past administration did speak to the, spoke to the railroad to get their bridge longer, so we.
Which we would have to do again, you know, if, if we're gonna do anything, we would have to.
Nina, that's great. All of those things should be part of a major discussion. So, we accumulate, collect all the data, all the things that have been done before. This is the fellow I talked to, probably was unaware, but he might have been younger and he might have not even been with the railroad. Hey, listen, I'll let you guys go. I'll, I'll get you the drawings. Let's have a meeting, and then we'll decide about the best way to approach it. All right?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for your time, guys.
Do we have anyone else, Cheryl? You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Other folks are on here if they want to unmute, they can. I helped Bob because he was on a phone line.
Anybody else want to speak?
Yeah, this is, my name is Justin Robinson with TA Robinson Asphalt Paving.
Hi, Justin.
How are you guys doing tonight? Um, I was calling regarding to the business site on number seven, a motion to reject the bids received for the McLaughlin Run Park improvements and authorization to re-advertise and rebid the project.
Okay.
Um, being that we spent a lot of hours on this project bidding it and were low, we were a little taken back when we saw this this afternoon. I just randomly checked to see if there was any agenda, and I saw this, and I was a little taken back. So, I figured I would call in and see what I could do to make this project still be a go for TA Robinson, being that we are in the township, we work across the street from that park, and would like to help the township in beautifying that park and actually making it look what it was once.
Kevin, can I ask you to chime in on the bid process?
Yeah, the, the bids come in over the, the estimate. So, the, the main thing is this is a grant-funded project, and because of the amount of change in scope that, that we need to do in order to get it to budget, there'll be a new proposal page. There'll be some reduced quantities in order to get the project in the budget. Kind of simultaneous, too. It just happens that there was another permit that was pending for another project that I'm going to talk about in a report. So, it's actually going to be two projects out to bid at the same time. It's really nothing to do, do with your bid. It's just, it's, it's over budget. This was a holdover project from Gateway, and it, it, the project came in over what the original budget was. So, we did meet and go over some reductions that we could do. So, the project, because it is, it is a grant-funded project that we need to, we do need to reject and then rebid the project, but it will be on the street tomorrow. We have the documents ready to go.
Okay, because I, I talked to John Howe originally and said that the square yards were way out of whack. And I said, if, if you go and change the square yards based off of my calculations and takeoffs, and he said, well, when we do the job, we're gonna measure it and pay per square yard. And just by doing, by doing my calculations alone with the actual square yards that is on the drawings, you would save $145,000 right off the bat.
Yeah, we understand that, that you made a few points such as that. Unfortunately, this project was put together and bid as a package from Gateway. There was no changes made to the original documents, so. Appreciate you pointing that out, but we did go back through and kind of flush through all their quantities then. But originally, the, the project was bid as is. It was already prepared whenever we took over as engineers, so.
Correct, and that's why John said base your numbers off of your actual square yards, because you're only going to be paid based on your square yards that would be completed. So, that's why our square yard numbers were so high in comparison to what the square yards actually are.
Yeah, the square yards that's on your bid sheet's what we had to go with, so.
Yes.
So, it is, I mean, we are recommending the bid be rejected and then rebid. So, you'll have an opportunity to, to bid again, and we're gonna open bids before the next meeting.
Okay. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak?
Yeah, Bruce. Kev, this isn't gonna put it out of the season again by rebidding and going through all this process, is it?
No, actu- actually, it's kind of happenstance, but after the project was bid, we didn't know when DEP was gonna issue their permit for the field being lowered and for the trash rack. You subsequently got that permit while we've been waiting on this meeting. And then we did get the MPDS permit about an hour ago. So, we now have a green light to bid the GDF project. So, tomorrow, if council's okay with this, we will call the GDF folks and get that process started. So, they have some notifications they have to do, and then we'll get the ad ready once they tell us it's okay to advertise it. So, we want to put in the trash rack contract that the first 30 days, they gotta move the dirt out of the field, because that material's gonna have to come across where these parking lots are, and then pave the parking lots this fall. So, it'd be nice if we can get the whole park project done all this year, so. We weren't sure that timing was gonna be the case, because DEP nor the Conservation District had officially weighed in, but you actually have both permits in hand now. Last week, the Conservation District notified that they wanted everything resubmitted under our name, because the original permit you got approved was in Gateway's name, and he didn't actually have a permit. So, we did that in the last week. We sent the permit in, and they issued it today. We're good to go on that project as well. So, the timing ends up being okay with, with these two, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Do we have anybody else from the public that wants to speak? Only once, twice.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Hello, it's Pat de Blasio here. Seem to be having some difficulty getting on the Zoom part of the meeting. I've got the audio part.
We can hear you.
That's good. Wanted to, to ask a bit about parking, and specifically the north end of Washington Avenue. It's a bit off the radar screen. The second question is to the engineer regarding lowering the baseball field at McLaughlin Park. You know, this, I, I've never quite heard a, an answer as to whether the lowering of the baseball field was going to mitigate the flooding, and if so, by how much. Obviously, it would mitigate some, but how many feet are we lowering the baseball field? And what is the engineer's professional opinion as to whether or not that will, would have impacted the 2018 flood? So, those are the, the two items that I'd appreciate some information on.
Kevin, go ahead.
Sure. I, I can, I can address it a little bit. In a future meeting, we're gonna, we'll, we'll have a presentation on all the flood mitigation efforts. This one here falls into the category of it's worth doing, because the trash rack is something that's needed based on the nature and a style of the flooding. You had a lot of clogging from things upstream. Trash rack itself will definitely help, and lowering of the field gives a place for that debris to go out into from the trash rack. It'll build up, and it'll move out into that. Lowering of the field does provide an area for volume, and the design that Gateway had and we followed through with was, they've just maximized the amount that you could lower the field, so you have the maximum amount of storage. The amount of difference that it makes, there's actually no one improvement. We got the area studied now from there all the way to the outlet, and there's work needed at the outlet of the stream. There's a levee wall necessary up past the borough building. There's two bridges that need changed out, and then there's a wall needed along Baldwin Street. And including that with the trash rack and the field lowering, and a little bit of stream enhancement up above, we can pass the 100-year storm event through the borough. And there needs some, it needs two screw pumps, flood pumps, in two different areas, and pump the water back up over levee wall. And when you combine all those things, including this area being lowered at the top, you can prevent the water from leaving the stream up above the park, coming down through the park and then down the street. You should be able to levitate that with this project, so. But we will have a future project that'll walk through for everybody on what, what we see the plan being and what the costs are for those things. But this is a good first step. I, I would say it's not something to eliminate at this point.
Yeah, I have been sold on the value of the trash rack since Bill Calusi first proposed it several years ago. Not a question in my mind about the trash rack. It's economical, and it solves a significant source of debris that appears to cause the flooding. Both your firm and Gateway were solidly behind that. You're, if I understand properly, you're rejecting a current set of bids, and you're going to be rebidding a project. One more time, how, how many, you know, how much volume are we trying to reduce? How much of this, how much of the reduction, the lowering of the ball field is to accommodate the trash rack? More importantly, how much of it is simply to, to lower the ball field, which has questionable, in, you know, from my understanding of the engineers, has questionable value? How, how much expense is that?
It's, it's two different projects. The one that is being rejected is not the flood mitigation project. It was the park project for the restoration of the park, actually, and it, which was most paving contract. The, the other one has not, has not been bid, and I'm sorry.
I apologize. As, as I started, Mr. Henderson, or Mr. President and Mr. Brett, I, I apologize. I, as I said, I was having some difficulty. I just joined the meeting and heard, you know, heard that piece and confused the two separate projects. I look forward to your, for your presentation on the flood control project. Thank you. And I, I leave open my question, or my comment about the, the parking in the north end. And is there, has there been a report on the, the work with Collier Township on the north end? So, I don't step on myself again, Mr. President?
No, no, no. There's been, we haven't discussed it at all tonight, and we have not had another conversation with Collier or the public officials related to it, but certainly it is on our agenda.
Okay, and a point of, just personal question, if whoever's running, is there a different meeting ID on Zoom or?
Cheryl, can you answer?
No, there is not.
Okay.
I had everyone that in, added to the meeting that came on that I saw. I'm not sure what difficulty you had, but anyone that's identifiable on here, I automatically, when I saw your number pop up, I automatically admitted you to the meeting.
Right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
The whole time. You're welcome.
Yeah, no, I know. It, it's worked brilliantly, Cheryl. You've done a great job with it.
Thanks.
I'm sure it's on my, I'm sure this little glitch is on my end, so thank you.
Not sure. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Only once. See if I can get to three. Twice, three times, okay. Let's move on with the rest of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the May 11th, 2020 regular meeting minutes as submitted.
I'll move, Joe Colosimo.
I'll second it. BJ Schneider.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the June 2020 bill list.
Joe Verducci, move.
Bruce, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to approve the June 12th, 19th, 26th, and July 3rd and 10th 2020 payrolls.
So moved. Bruce?
Second, Nick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to adopt ordinance number 1014 of the Borough of Bridgeville relative to the establishment and maintenance of police employees' pension, annuity, insurance, and benefit fund or funds to amend certain provisions of the pension plan or program applicable to the police employees of the borough.
So moved.
Yeah, Bruce, moved.
Oh, okay.
Nina, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to accept the bids for contract number 20-w01 Maple Street retaining wall and award the, the bid to Gregori Construction Incorporated as low bidder in the amount of $135,900. Subject to Gregori Construction Incorporated obtaining the required insurance certificates, performance bond, and payment bond, and review and approval of the same by Borough Solicitor prior to execution of the agreement by the Borough.
I still move. Nick Sheselski.
You have a second?
I second BJ.
BJ. All in favor?
Question, question on a motion.
Go ahead.
Joe Verducci, did we budget money for that this year?
I'm pretty sure we did, yes.
Okay. I, I thought we did, but I just wanted to make sure, that's all.
I'll, I'll, I'll take a look, and I'll report that in the finance.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to accept the bids for contract number 20-r01-2020 Road, Roadway Improvement Program and award the bid to lowest responsible bidder, Young Blood Paving Incorporated, an amount of $161,194.50 for the base bid and add alternate. Number one, intention upon the review of all required documentation by the engineer Brett.
I assume move.
Nina?
Second, Joe Colosimo.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to reject the bids received and for the McLaughlin Run Park improvements and authorization to re-advertise and rebid the project.
Let's see, so moved.
Nick Cease, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to accept and pay any commission due to May 2020 Real Estate Tax Collector Report.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion to accept the April 2020 Treasures Report.
Joe V, I'll move.
Second. Bruce?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. I need a motion to accept the May 2020 Police Report.
So moved. Bruce?
I'll second BJ.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, committee reports. Administration, Virginia Schneider.
Mr. President, I.
Mr. President, I, I move to appoint Cheryl Glowak as the interim borough secretary with a rate of pay of $5 per hour during the set interim appointment time from June 1st to July 22nd or 27th, when the new incoming borough manager would start.
I assume, are you done with the motion?
I'm done with the motion, Nino.
I assume move, Nino.
So we had BJ moved and Nino second.
Check.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else, BJ?
Um, Bill, I'd like to add to that. I don't know if you were going to cover what we're currently doing with the COVID-19 and the opening of the borough building.
Go ahead.
Business is opened, as you know, entered the green phase on Friday. And we feel that it would be important for the borough building to be open as well. So Tuesday, I think that's what, June 9th tomorrow, the borough building will be open. There will be notifications on the website as well as Facebook as to what restrictions face Mac, obviously, the, the lobby area will be closed off the restroom as well as any of the doorways. But the girls will be in the office. We encourage you though, if you can, the residents of Bridgeville to make payments via the box outside for sewer or trash. If you can write a check, it would be greatly appreciated. The, the less they have to handle money would be appreciated. As well as if you need to make an appointment, we'd ask you to call ahead of time so they can make arrangements for you to come in. But we're just trying to limit the amount of traffic that comes through the building at this time. Was there anything else that Cheryl added to that?
No, that message that she's drawn up will be on the website and Facebook tomorrow, Cheryl?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be on both websites. So. Thank you. Anything else, BJ?
I'm sorry? I said, thank you for your efforts. Well, thank you for believing that I can take care of the borough for the next few months with your, your assistance and help. I appreciate it.
Anything else, BJ?
No, that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Cheryl, you're gonna do a good job.
Thanks, Nino. He's been doing it. I will surely do my best.
We know that.
Finance, Joe Verducci.
Uh, to answer Bruce's question, there is a line item, but they, I think it's a group of them, but Bruce, I'm quite confident that, that the reports I'm looking at now, I, I, I don't see it broken down. I'll check in the other reports and get back to you, but I'm pretty confident that, I mean, that obviously was one of the items we wanted to address anyway.
Exactly. So, thank you.
Yep. As far as the finance committee, I actually need to make a motion as well. I spoke with the finance committee and with Lori Collins stepping down just to protect Lori and protect the, the borough. Uh, I need to make a motion to remove Lori Collins as an authorized signer at the deposit accounts held at Brentwood Bank.
I assume move.
A second.
Joe, Joe made the motion and Nick is, pardon me? Joe made the motion and Nick second? Did I get it right?
Either one, it's fine.
Okay.
And I also.
Yeah. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
I, I also need to make a motion to, to provide information only access to Cheryl Valentino and Cheryl Glowak to be able to assist in the, some of the different things that need to be done on a daily basis through the bank accounts as well as help with payroll and et cetera. And Brentwood Bank has a category, category of information only, but they're not authorized signers. So we're providing them basically the online banking to be able to handle some of the, the day-to-day banking needs. So that's my second motion. Motion on the floor.
I assume move.
BJ has already seconded it, Nino.
Okay. I drink too much wine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Other than that, we're, we're still seeing some of the, the different revenues coming in. So that's a good thing. I will be definitely interested to see from the report how, how the different revenues that come in now will be coming in from, from June. So that'll be interesting to kind of guide us on where things are going for the rest of the year. As far as a few of the main revenue sources that we have that we need to keep on top of. I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Parks and Recreation, Joe Klosmo.
Thanks, Mr. President. Well, under the yellow phase of our COVID-19 quarantines, our parks opened only for walking and using the trail. All playground equipment had been taped off, restrooms had been closed. Athletic groups had postponed and or canceled practices and games. Friday, June 5th, under the direction of Governor Wolf, Pennsylvania entered the green phase of our coronavirus pandemic. The green phase allowed us to the opportunity to open all four Bridgeville parks, some restrictions and guidelines. Both Cheryl, her coworkers, Cheryl Valentino have been extremely helpful to me in getting our parks up and running. I'm appreciative of their professionalism and help as well as the Public Works Department who are responsible for maintaining our parks. Signage has been printed, laminated and posted at our parks, including social distancing signs and sanitizing signs, washing of hands for all users of our parks. Restrooms are open with appropriate signage in the restroom. Public Works has been instructed that restroom facilities must be cleaned and standardized. Athletic groups have been advised to follow guidelines issued to them when initiating practices and games. As far as that goes, mostly like the baseball associations, the softball associations have issued some guideline from what I understand on running their programs. So I don't expect the borough to be policing these organizations. It's pretty much up to them. The following has been placed on our borough website and Facebook page. All parks in Bridgeville Borough are open to the public. Please follow CDC and Pennsylvania Department of Health guidelines on social distancing for all areas in the park. Beginning on June 8th, 2020, you will start accepting reservations for the pavilions. Call the office at 412-221-6012 from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM or email bridgevilleborough.com to request it. They, please keep in mind, social distancing guidelines must be followed for rentals. I wrote that up beforehand, so I won't take too long to read. If that's what's going on in the parks, I noticed when we taped off the playground equipment, somebody, a couple different sets of equipment, someone just tore the tape down and they were nice to do them in the trash cans, but someday sooner or later, I know it's on our budget, but we are up for putting cameras in Charterius Park at least. And hopefully, once Joe Carr comes along, we'll be able to get that moving because it is in the budget. We've been trying to get this done for years and I think it's only about time. Uh, that's basically all I have.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate all the help, all the work you guys did to get the, the parks open and up to speed. Public Works, Nino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to make a comment on the, the opening of the office. Public Works is instructed by me that 7:30 when they come to work, one of them or two of them or whatever to go upstairs, sanitize absolutely everything, the door, door handle, the bathroom and all that. It's, that's definitely, it's okay. They know it. And I don't care who's going up, one or two. We did buy, Mrs. Ball, did she buy the paint already? We're gonna paint the new manager room, including the two officers where the girls are. That's gonna be painted before the carpet is coming in. And as far as the, the, the work of the public work, of course, cutting grass in the parks and the road, in a, on the road and island and clean up and so the, so the, that's a normal, normal routine in the summertime. Okay? Empty the garbage bag and so the, so the, so the. The concern I have very strongly to, to pay four hours for Saturday and Sunday, the public work and maybe overtime as well to, to sanitize the, the bathroom and, and so forth. I strongly believe maybe now we, how they say, we got caught with the pants on. So we have to continue that, but I really strong believe that we should find somebody on 1099 to do their work. It'll become cheaper than pay four hours and maybe overtime for the future and even for now, as soon as we can. If the parking recreationists agree with that and the financial committee agree, agree with that. And I'm sure there's some retired people regret to take their job. We don't know, but something to explore. Other than that, gentlemen, ladies, this COVID, it's been disastrous for everybody. It's gonna be for us just as well. So that's all I can say. Let's hope that we can continue to do the right thing. The right thing is for the safety, we are doing it. And the financials are gonna suffer a little bit. Maybe Mr. Verducci will take care of that in, in a professional manner. And thank you so much. And I hope the next meeting will be done in a regular place. Maybe we can use the, the fire hall for a while. And that's all I have. Thank you, everybody. See you.
Thanks, Nino.
Sure.
Public Safety, Bruce Keller-Duchy.
Yeah, the, the other thing I have, Bill, is we, I'm trying to put together to have the two civil service candidates sworn in and I've talked to them. We're hoping for Wednesday or Thursday evening. I'll let the rest of the council know and the mayor so we can get this done. Chad and Gloria both put, put together the ad for the police department. Chad can elaborate on that. And we're moving forward with creating a list for civil service and that's all I have.
Thanks, Bruce. Mayor Betty Copeland.
Yes, thank you. I attended the four cemeteries with the American Legion to, to honor our beloved veterans who had passed away. And at Melrose Cemetery, Pastor Yeoman from Bethany Presbyterian Church opened with prayer, after which Devlin Robinson gave an appropriate message. And Katie Versick played Amazing Grace on her violin. And at all cemeteries, Tony Versick and his son TJ played taps. Also, Angelina called me and she wanted Chief King and for you council people to know how Officer Young assisted her when she left her keys and purse in her car after she went to Rite Aid to make some purchases. And he was very comforting and assisted her and made her feel calm and she was appreciative of that. And also we want to wish Dennis Valentine happy retirement. He's retiring this month after 31 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. And congratulations to Denny as well. Police Chief Chad King.
Thank you, Council President. Just to elaborate, been on with Councilman Geller-Duchy brought up. We have opened the, the process to start hiring, accept applications. Deadline is the 19th of June. And we have our test date set up for July 1st, that being the first via physical agility test and then the written test immediately thereafter. And once the scores are received back from that, we'll begin to set up interviews for later in the month of July. So my, my goal is to have everything wrapped up and hopefully be able to appoint somebody by August's council meeting.
I've got a cat too.
Yeah, just a cat stroll right in front. You wouldn't believe that was a bear, would you, Chief, if I told you?
I, I can tell the difference.
All right.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Solicitor Tom McDermott.
Uh, thank you. I don't have anything to add to my written report this evening.
Okay, any questions for the solicitor? Okay, Borough Engineer Kevin Brett.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I do have a couple of updates since we are in construction season. You did do the award tonight on the 2020 roads. We will get that award letter out tomorrow and have a pre-construction meeting in about three weeks. 2019 roads, they did mill last week. They're doing prep on the streets the first couple of days of this week and are scheduled to pave Wednesday. So by the end of the week, we should be able to do a final walkthrough and get that program closed out before the next meeting. We did take bid numbers on some repairs on Bar Hill Road just to see what they would come in at. They were well in excess of letter bid openings. And we would recommend including those in next year's road program as one of the line items in the bid and actually take bids to do those repairs. Long-term road plan, we do have it finalized and I'll be sending it out to the road committee for Nino to take a look at. And if we can meet, we'll have a meeting before the next council meeting and then hopefully present that to council as your 15-year plan. Uh, next item is, as I indicated, you did get the permits for the trash rack and the flood project. That is grouped with the Janet Way Access Project on the grant. So there is, as I indicated, if council's okay with it, we will start to process with the funding and go through, they have some notifications they have to make for WB, MB participation. Once they make those notifications, then they give the green light to do the advertisement and we'll get the wage rates and then we'll have the contract documents finalized, put together and bids opened. I would hope to open it before the next meeting. But if the county takes an extra week or two, it may happen between the next two meetings, but we will expedite that if council was okay with that, to get that moving. As I indicated, we have got through the modeling. So we're currently in the process of finalizing the model from the bottom of town all the way to the top to this project. And then taking your study that you had done on Baldwin Street on the various projects, we're gonna overlay those two documents. And then I would hope to come before Planning Commission sometime over the next month. And then a month or two later, have a joint meeting and run through those model results and the projects. We did have a pre-application meeting with DEP to confirm the levy at the bottom of town around the ice cream shop all the way to the very outlet. It's actually not a very high wall. It's only about four foot high, maybe five foot at the highest. And DEP's main requirement is going to be to make sure that we can get the property prior to submitting a permit. There really didn't seem to be any hurdles. The modeling works. And it does take a couple of screw pumps down at the low point in town. And we would pipe those back up over the levy wall, but you can pass the flood if we increase the height, height of the wall. And then we would eliminate the flooding in that downtown area around, around the borough building.
I have a question. On, on that levy, i- is that the one that the, we're gonna have the borough workers do or is that somebody we have to contract out?
That would be most likely a contract out and it would be a. That would be uh, most likely a contract out and it would be a um, it would be a grant. Once you get these uh, analysis completed and we start into the um, permit process, um, you are applicable then for some grants that without the study, you can't even apply for. So this in the Baldwin Street, um, once we get the cost estimates finalized, I, I think we would submit those as a phase one, phase two. And then we would approach the uh, county for the uh, county bridges to be replaced. Um, the one right above that that has the pier, um, that bridge needs to go. It needs to be erased and the pier needs to go because it is a uh, no matter how you run the model, it catches too much debris, it clogs and uh, a, a, a standard bridge needs put, put in across there and then.
Refresh my memory though, what, what was the one that we were thinking of having the borough workers work on?
There's two uh, culverts there that need cleaned.
Oh, that, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna clean those and then uh, at some point, uh, we have to find a way to get those manholes lowered or relocated. It's in the middle. They catch an awful lot of debris too. That's a separate project though. It's not a costly project. It's just a pain to get um, approved because those manholes are owned by somebody else, so. Um, so we will have for next year's uh, grant cycle, uh, we will have a bunch of grants. Uh, once uh, you review and are okay with the model and the results, then we'll have a whole list that we can apply and work with a new manager to do that. I'm sure he'll be uh, I know he's, he's really good at the grant uh, writing uh, from what I understand. So it, it will be good to uh, work with him on those. Uh, next is the um, Bar Hill Road uh, Storm Sword Project. Um, we have submitted the permit back in April and uh, the county, uh, we did talk to them this week. They're back working and uh, the fee was sent in. So they should be finalizing uh, the documents and send out. We could get a comment or two, but we don't think we will. Um, once we get that, then that project would be in line to be bid as well. Uh, the Backflow Preventer Project, we sent out a punch list from last year's, a couple of small items. And we're currently working with Cheryl uh, to get the list pulled together for this year's and get that put out the bid. Um, the last item is uh, Alcasan. Um, we did submit a grow grant application. Um, we did get comments back from Alcasan. It did not get funded. Um, but they are providing some input on a future uh, grow grant that we can apply for and hopefully get you funded for that. Um, it basically is uh, the reason you got rejected, the amount of improvement based on what you spent and the type of improvement. It doesn't get you enough reduction on flow numbers um, that they felt it, it could be funded. Um, but we have uh, a project that we think will get you there. And then uh, you can take credit for some of that past work as well. So um, we will be working with Al- Alcasan to try to get you uh, a grow grant because I don't believe you've had one yet, so. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Where are we at uh, with the, the parking lot and the sign, Kev?
Uh, the parking lot was um, uh, at alternate one, it was awarded. We're gonna indicate to the contractor if he could do that first. And then the sign itself, um, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how that's being built or how it's included. It's not in the bid itself, I don't believe.
Okay, I thought, I thought it was all bid together.
Yeah, I think it's, I believe it's separate, but I'll double check that, so.
Okay.
I do have, I do have one other item. I'm sorry, I just noticed it. Um, I got a notice from uh, South Fayette's manager that the Hastings uh, Development Project at the Old Mayview um, hospital site, um, they've had a traffic study completed uh, back when they started the project. And I think it was approved by um, South Fayette and PennDOT. It required some improvements. Um, they've come back to South Fayette and indicated they would like to do an alternative. And the alternative is, the original plan proposed um, some work at one of your intersections, which was uh, Mayview Road and Sharkier Street. Uh, and I think it's Lesnet Road. And they wanna not do that work and they wanna do additional work at Washington Pike and Boyce Road. And South Fayette's uh, they would like something from the borough acknowledging that you were in receipt of this study. We weren't part of the review um, back when this was done. Uh, Gateway Engineers actually prepared the plans and the study for um, the developer in this case. Um, and they prepared the alternative. And I was gonna have a traffic engineer look at it, but the more I've looked at this, um, I think it's as simple as um, you've received the study and what's council's feelings on saying that's okay not to do work at the intersection in Bridgeville and do work at um, Washington Pike and Boyce Road?
That just merely helps them more and, and not us, right?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a poor intersection in, in, in the borough. I, I think if I, if I understand that route correctly, and I've been through there quite a few times, it's a shortcut. And you get an awful lot of traffic coming up along the uh, drugstore and uh, goes up to that intersection. So if you're okay with it, I, I, I don't know if it'll do anything, but I'm okay responding that the borough is not in favor of the alternative and you would prefer the work to be done per the original study.
Yeah, I don't know what everyone else's feelings are on this, but that, that intersection at Bank and Lesnet and, and Sharkiers needs as much attention as any we have.
What are they, what are their plans to do up there, Kevin?
Uh, they, they were gonna do some uh, lane improvements, I think some turn lanes. Um, I don't know that they would go as far as signalization, things like that, but they were gonna do some lane improvements on, which would help.
Right.
I think it's one of those intersections that anything helps. It's in a failing state today, it gets worse under this uh, when it's, with this development's finished. So that being the case, um, I just think it's a bad situation. It gets a little bit worse. So if they do, do a little bit to mitigate it, that's better for, in the long run for you and, and for the area, so.
Well, also to add that it's gonna be bad whenever they close the Boyce Road, Mayview uh, intersection. Everything's gonna be coming up through Bridgeville at that point as well.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody wanted to go to nineteen, wanted to go to Cecil and, and bat- North Strabane that way. I mean, it's gonna be ugly, so just to add to your comment about that intersection.
Okay.
And the additional development that's going there.
If we say no, and they just still go ahead and do what they want and tell us to take a hike?
Well, PennDOT, the, the, the letter will go to the uh, it'll go to the township and then um, it has to go to PennDOT too then, from them. Uh, PennDOT uh, will be the final arbiter of it. Um, they could say, you know, the, the borough's not okay with it, so we're not okay with it. Or they could say, well, um, we'll keep that in mind, but yeah, go ahead and do the alternative, so.
Hey Kevin, what about St. Clair? I would think St. Clair would have to have a comment on it as well.
They asked for their comment as well and uh, I, I believe Gateway's their engineer also. Um, so I don't know that they got any comment back uh, on it. If they did, I don't believe it was negative, so.
Do you have a comment? Is Upper St. Clair, they're building condos right there as well. Are they required for any type of improvement because of their development that's right next to that intersection?
I don't know. I didn't know they were building one there. I can check. I can check with Penn, PennDOT and see.
Mike, do you know how many there are gonna be there?
I mean, it's, obviously it's not significant compared to, you know, what's they made. Um, but yeah, I mean, if you go past that, I think it's maybe.
Six, six to ten.
Is it, is that it?
I think, I mean, it's not much, but still.
Yeah, they want, they, it won trigger a traffic study then if it's six to ten. Uh, that, that wouldn't be enough units, but like Hastings is, Hastings is a, is, as you guys know, it's a massive development, so. But, okay, I'll, I will respond on behalf of the borough if you're okay with that and.
Yeah.
Indicate we're, we're, uh, the borough's not in favor of it.
Hey Kev, Kev, could you copy us on that letter before you send it, just?
Yeah, I can send it over and draft if you're okay with it.
Yeah.
For everybody and you can look at it and Tom can put his two cents in it too, if he wants.
I think that would be better this way here. You don't take the blame with something's wrong.
Okay. Do you want me to draft it for Borough Letterhead? So it comes from, from the borough?
That's fine, yeah.
I can do that. I, I can put the meat to it and then uh, um, you guys can sign it and then they'll know it's from you.
All right, that works.
Okay, good deal.
Thanks, Kev.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a question for Kev. Kev, the, the drawings for the McLaughlin Park, that's what we've been approved for now as far as the lowering and trash rack.
Yes.
Are they available? I, I know there was a copy there, but I had, I didn't get a chance to see it. Are they still with the borough building or?
They, they are and we've had a couple tweaks along the way. Um, uh, do you want me to email it out to everybody in a PDF? Or do you want me to send a hard copy to the borough building?
We'll email it out. I think we'd all like to see it, yeah.
Okay, I'll do that and uh, I'll email you into the park project to the changes we made to the quantity so you can see them.
Okay, so because we constantly getting questions and this way here, we at least got some idea of what's gonna happen, so.
Absolutely. Okay, I'll make sure they both get emailed out tomorrow. Uh, we'll put them into a compressed file.
Okay, thank you.
Good deal. Thank you.
Any more questions for Kevin? Well, we got him there. All right, thanks, Kev. Um, Fire Chief's not here, right? Uh, Softbridge Dan Miller's not here, all right? Didn't show up, okay. Um, Mary, is Mary Weiss here?
She gave me.
Okay.
She wants to invite everyone to the June twenty-third, seven-thirty meeting at the Sharkier's Room to hear the story about stolen disputed and inconclusive presidential elections, the invention of the paper ballot and how George Washington supplied liquor to the voters to win an election presented by Todd DiPostino.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What was the time on that, Betty?
Seven-thirty, and she said sharp.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, is there a library representative by any chance?
I don't believe there is.
No, okay. Uh, no one from the Parking Authority? I didn't notice anybody here.
No.
And Planning Commission, uh, I saw Dell here. Dell?
Uh, good evening, Mr. President. Um, we're, uh, we're continuing our discussions regarding uh, the comprehensive plan and looking at um, issues. Um, we hope to finish that up um, in the June meeting. And um, you know, pass some, start talking about some things and, and pass some things on to you guys. You know, August, September issue. So, you know, we talked about, we discussed walking issues and traffic issues this last meeting. So um, it, again, it's all preliminary discussions based on uh, the co- the old comprehensive plan and, and just kind of looking at, at issues that may still uh, be pressing for, for Bridgeville. That's it.
Well, thanks, Don, and uh, thanks for the work you guys are doing. I've had a chance to sit in on them and, and uh, they've been really, there's a good dialogue and a lot of collaboration going on. Appreciate what you guys are doing.
Yeah, it's all about having some discussion and, and trying to, trying to talk through some things, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
All good, good stuff. Thank you. Uh, anything under old business?
Yeah, I've got something real quick here if you don't mind. Uh, folks had brought up the uh, the grant application on Blythe from uh, State of Pennsylvania. And I was sort of under the impression that it was something that the CAG had been handling for us. But this is a separate grant. Now, I uh, sent the paperwork over to the CAG to have them look at it, which they're doing. They'd be glad to do it for us. I've talked to Bill about it, sort of, they would be a lot better and easier for us if they would do it. But this is, I think I'm coming up pretty quick on this thing. So Michelle's supposed to get back to us this week on it. It's like a twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar grant, ten percent uh, match we have to do. And she said that would be at least two, possibly three houses if we get the thing, so. She's done the work, uh, put information to Cheryl and I think BJ's on the list too, plus myself. And if I hear anything, I'll let you all know, but uh, that's all I got.
No, great.
Okay, so, so those, it's separate from uh, what Joe's been talking about?
And the CAG?
Yeah, the CAG was something pretty much the county would work on and uh, this was something that she sort of acted like she hadn't seen it before, but I mean, they, she's been doing grants for over twenty-five years down there. She's good at it. And she'll give us the straighten there. But I, as to whether we could mobilize and get it done ourselves, I don't know.
Joe, when I had brought that up to everybody, uh, Joe Carr actually had some interest in doing it as well. Should we check with him?
Well.
I'm just asking, I mean, just as a, is he fine with them sending it that way?
You want him to do all the paperwork for it?
No, he volunteered, he said that he would be involved in it. Just, do you wanna ask him, hey, we got the CAG to do it? Are you okay with that? I mean, just uh, cause he was saying that he, he was interested in being involved in those, so. Should that be something that we should check with?
That's up the administration. I'm just, it's the coun- council this year, we're actually, it's not just committee thing. If you guys all wanna go that way, fine. As far as the CAG doing, I was just trying to expedite the thing to the deadline. End of June, first part of July, so we gotta get it done. So that's the issue. I mean, I've got to keep Joe in the loop for sure.
I think both of them are actually up quickly, aren't they? If uh.
County things a little further down the road, I'm not.
Oh, okay, all right.
Not this quick, I know that.
Okay, um, any more comments, Joe? Verducci on that? Yeah, okay. All right, thanks, Joe.
Hey.
Anything under old business anymore? Under new business, I just wanted to mention, we had a um, an executive session at six o'clock this evening. Talk about uh, legal matter and personnel issues, so uh, wanted to record that. Anything else under new business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may please. A day or so ago, you received an email from um, a number two. I can't pronounce her name well, but she's number two. We all know that, okay? Uh, it is an application for Planning Commission, Kayla Lawrence. I know the people, the Bridgeville blood, her grandpa, her grandparents was Denziger and Simaroli. She live in Greenwood for, she bought a house there. She live in Bridgeville uh, for about eight year. You don't have to make motion now, by no means. Uh, she live in Cecil as uh, that's where the parents moved. She was on the Parking Committee in Cecil. In Bridgeville, she's uh, on a board of the library. And she's very, very active. She graduated from Robert Morrissey, she's in finance. Uh, take a look at email, please. I know the family, they're my next door neighbor. I like to say that, but it doesn't have anything to do with my recommendation. The girl, it's absolutely fantastic. She love Bridgeville. She's uh, very artistic uh, and uh, take a good look at. Uh, Dell, take a good look to this young lady. You're gonna study her, you're gonna like her. So I, only I wanna say to, to council to look the, or it's very small ad that you got from uh, our interim manager there. And think about it and value it her. And uh, you'll be very happy to being got on board. She is Bridgeville blood. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Nino.
You're welcome. Quick question on that. Do we have to post something like that for a board like that?
That was my question.
That's your pleasure.
Yeah.
In the past, to keep everybody aware of what's going on, we have done that.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea as well to do that, yeah.
I mean, she might be the greatest person in the world, I just. I'm not transparent on this.
Right.
Should we make a motion to advertise that?
I make that motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor to advertise to uh, for, replace a vacancy on the Planning Commission.
Just for clarification, did you want that in a newspaper or just like a web posting?
Whatever is legal and cheap.
You don't have to do anything legal, it's just a preference. I'm not sure who actually reads the, you know, the. I'm not sure who actually reads the, you know, the classified legal ads. You could blast it out in other ways. I just put that out there for your consideration.
Well, isn't, isn't the.
Start moving to Facebook and the Borough's website to do it instead of paying all the time a fortune.
If you don't have to, that would be my recommendation. And frankly, you get better exposure with your web, your Facebook, your blasts for no money.
Yeah, and that, that the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish, right, is to get more people interested.
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor by Joe Colosimo to advertise in a way we deem necessary or fit for a vacancy on the Planning Commission. Seconded by Nick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else under new business?
Bill, I just want to mention that we're looking to move the meetings back to the Borough Building, but we'll monitor this green phase and decide in, you know, in the next couple of weeks whether we'll continue or back into the building. Or like Nino's option because we offered that as well.
If, yeah, I, I think one of the concerns we had and certainly we're going to monitor is the spacing required. You know, if twenty people showed up in the Borough Building, could you keep them six feet apart? That could be a difficult thing. So we will continue to monitor and hopefully we get to that stage, we can do it.
I think if you move the site, you have to advertise it for at least ten, a week to ten days. That would be a question for Tom, but in the past, if you move the site, you're going to need, need to know two weeks before we do it, if you're going to move it to the Fire Department.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll, I'll check with the chief just to see if it's even a possibility. And if so, I think we'll be prepared to make a decision to meet that requirement if we're going to do it.
I make a comment obvious. The Borough Building, it's too small to enforce all the regulation. We could, but it's easier, the Fire Department, Mr. Chairman, gentle, ladies and gentlemen. There's a spacious room there. I would strongly believe that's what we should do next month. But it depends, like the chairman say, let's see how the thing goes. Thank you.
Thanks, Nino. Anything else under new business? If not, I'll take a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Nino. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.